We're going to go ahead and get started momentarily. Really appreciate folks coming out and taking the time to attend tonight's event and follow up on our last public forum. So I'm going to just kind of introduce the agenda this evening, and then I'm going to turn things over to our Board of Education Chair, Sue Salina. But I'm not going to read through every one of the bullets there, but basically what I want people to understand is the structure of the evening. We have a pretty detailed presentation, and then certainly we're going to have plenty of opportunity for public comment and attempt to answer questions that you do have. But one of the things we want to start with tonight that Susan is going to talk about is recent Board of Education actions. So the Board of Ed gave some specific direction to the administration relative to certain options we've talked about. I've communicated that to the public, but I know that it's important that the board wants to talk through that decision-making process with people that are here tonight. We also want to go through and give people a better understanding of what we've done in terms of steps we've taken to get more input since the initial public hearing back in November. Mr. Sullivan is going to share with us some detailed information on the survey that went out and talk about the two options, the 6-7-8 option and the current configuration option that are up for consideration. We have some cost information, and then we have a significant amount of the time we want to talk through. We have Scott Baker, our middle school principal, Aaron Murray, our assistant superintendent. One of the questions that we've consistently fielded are, "Talk to us more about how you view the educational benefits or some of the pros and cons of that 6-7-8 model." And I know people have reached out with questions on that, so we hope to provide some information on that model this evening and then respond to questions that people have. So that is the agenda, and at this time I am going to introduce our Board of Education Chair, Sue Salina.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for coming out tonight. I just wanted to recap a little bit of what happened at our last Board of Ed meeting last week, and that was where after all the neighborhood meetings we've had in all the different schools in town, the Board, the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force kind of heard loud and clear, and we brought that to the Board, that the 5-6 school really was not a good option for us to consider, that closing an elementary school is not something this town wants to hear, and if we were to go forward building a 5-6 school, financially, our responsibility to the town would really deem closing one, if not two, schools at that point, pulling two grades out of our elementaries. So that conversation really was a nonstarter for us. We feel that it's important to listen to the feedback we've gotten since November, so as a Board, we all decided unanimously to pull that out of consideration. We have also pulled a slide, if you've been to many of our meetings, we have pulled a slide that said "status quo." That essentially is our maintenance list. It is what we do now. It is a targeted list of all the things that need to be fixed in the buildings as they exist. So if after all of this, we do decide to stay with a K6 configuration and we are not going to move a renovation plan forward, then we have to kind of throw out the rulebook a little bit and figure out how best to maintain the buildings we have, given the conditions they're in. So we're going to have to change that practice up, so it's really not an option for us to put out there. It's not the result of a master plan. That would be totally, that would be one of the other two options, renovating all our schools or moving our sixth grade up and building a sixth grade wing and working on Latimer. The other thing was our focus on what's best for students. So we are going to go through much of that information tonight, so I don't want to be redundant and belabor that, but we have a lot of good information, and it's going to be again a community decision. Do we want our sixth graders up at the middle school? Do we want them to stay K6? So this again is why we're here tonight, to hear your feedback, because as I've said all along, this is a community decision about where we want our school system to go and whether your children are just starting or in the middle of their elementary experience. By the time we open our doors, we don't know where your kids are going to be. They might not be affected by this. So we want to make sure that you're looking at this from a community decision. Where do we want our schools to be? And then we're going to look at the opportunities and the challenges, as I said, and then hear from all of you, so we can work on, listen to what you say, take it in, and help us make our next decision. So I want to thank you again for all coming, and Neil Sullivan is up next.
So my role in updating you tonight is to talk about what the Central Office Administration, our principals and the Board of Education have been up to since our last public forum at Henry James. And a lot of that involved two new sources of feedback, one which was what we called our Neighborhood Meetings, which were a tour of our five elementary schools and inviting parents and community members to come out. We had wonderful conversations at each and every school, ranging from, our smallest crowd was about 30 people who came out, and our largest was upwards of 100. So we really got into conversation, and the issues were really different at each school. And what we tried to do here is to bring together the themes. First, I want to just talk to you about the demographics. One of my roles is to follow the demographics in the school system, and you can see here, just to make sure everybody's up to speed, although I recognize a lot of faces from our Neighborhood Meetings, that the two pressure points of our elementary enrollment projections are Squadron Line, which is represented by the top line on this graph, and Latimer Lane. And you could see that over the next, the projection cycle here is about 10 years, but that the rise in population of those top two schools, Squadron Line and Latimer Lane, largely comes in the first five years. If you look at the curve, you can see that the students, based on these projections, the pressure is going to arrive, and nearly 100 students at each of those schools, additional to what we already have. And that's why we need to make a decision. We need to make a best first decision about what we need to do in order to both upgrade aging facilities, but in addition to address these demographics. You'll also, if you're familiar with our schools, and I know you are, we have been taking advantage of every space that we have. So a lot of our classrooms, which were designed originally as classrooms, have become divided up spaces that are either special education rooms, intervention rooms. We have a reading intervention program, a math intervention program at the elementary level, so rooms that used to be designed to take a full class are in other uses right now. Our core spaces in many of the schools are very stressed. This picture at the bottom happens to be of Latimer Lane, but there are many of our gym slash auditorium spaces and our cafeteria spaces that are stressed. The average age of our elementary schools is nearly 75 years of age. So those are definitely spaces that need to be addressed. And if you look at the top left, you can see that's a Latimer Lane picture too. It's an accessibility issue. We don't have accessibility ramps in this particular location. Terrifield also presents some pretty significant accessibility issues, and this is something that we want to make sure people understand in terms of a reason why we need to address particularly our elementary facilities. In terms of the Neighborhood Meetings, just wanted to give a highlight of the themes that we heard. Certainly, a lot of our presentation at the Neighborhood Meetings was about the architectural plans, the space, and a lot of the feedback that we heard was, "We want to hear more about the educational value of these different models." Can you please talk to us more about why you would even think about a fifth or sixth grade school or sixth grade at the middle school? And I think tonight we're pivoting our conversation, when I turn it over to Aaron Murray and Scott Baker in a little bit, that in response to those questions, we are trying to address a little bit about those things we heard. There were a lot of questions about what other communities do with grade structures, and Aaron and Scott will go over that. You'll see that K6 is actually now a, very much a minority structure, based on other communities in Connecticut that you'll see. We are very unique in still maintaining a K6 structure, good or bad. We're unique in terms of that particular model. I certainly want to emphasize that at Latimer Lane, which is our most stressed school in terms of space and population, that particular Neighborhood Meeting definitely had a flavor of, "What can you do for us now? Our classrooms are crowded now," and these plans, while long-term, need to also address the stress that some of our classrooms and core spaces are feeling in the immediate. And certainly, as we go over these plans, that's one of the reasons why you will see that Latimer Lane does rise to the top of the priority list. There were certainly some comments that, and I think when Susan talked about taking the 5-6 off the table, there was definitely a theme that people didn't want to support something if it meant that one of the schools might close. Certainly, we heard that from Terrifield at the last public forum, as that community came out in force, but then we heard it from others, that I may not want to support anything if it affects any of the schools, because I wouldn't want to be in that position. There were certainly concerns, if a school did close, what would happen with a vacant building? Talked a little bit about what's happened in other communities with that. And I think one of the themes that emerged certainly is people understanding that, I think some people felt that this was about aging facilities, and some people felt it was about the demographics, but in fact, you can't really separate those two things. Those factors are merging and forcing us to make a decision. A lot of commentary about the logistics, things like buses and start times, and how would that work in these different structures? And we've certainly put some thought into that, but any decisions about those, by the time a building were to open, we'd be four years down the road. There would be a lot of time to have discussions around logistics, although we heard that there are a lot of questions and concerns, and they may come out tonight. And then certainly some questions around redistricting. You'll see on some of our plans, we try to equalize the populations of the schools in some examples, and in other examples, we don't. And people wanted to talk about the importance of that. Is it important to have similarly sized elementary schools or not? There were definitely defenders of the K6 structure, and I'm sure we'll hear from some tonight. And a lot of questions about how much, in our first few forums, about how much the teachers had been involved. I think we got good word out, because by the time we got to our last two sessions at Central and Terrifield, we had a lot of teachers out, and we have a lot of teachers out tonight. So I'm pleased to see that, and we are definitely going to continue to engage our faculty in this conversation. And as Susan said, the idea of kind of a status quo or a doing nothing doesn't come without cost. I mean, maintaining these buildings already has a cost associated with it. And then finally, the last few themes here, a lot of concern about those core spaces and what it looks like when you bring a full school into some of the spaces that are our gyms and auditoriums, what it's like to have a school event and not be able to find any parking, and being able to address those concerns. Some commentary about the fact that our housing market has changed somewhat in Simsbury, and that we are seeing more multi-unit housing and what that does to our population and to our demographics. Very important point, that some of these options you'll see might allow us to add preschool back into more schools than Squadron Line, where our preschool is centralized now, and that was seen as a positive, that if you could bring preschool in and help with that transition into school for our youngest students at more buildings, that there might be a benefit there. And that, you know, the fact of the matter is, the elementary schools need to be renovated because of the age of the spaces, and they really, in a lot of cases, are struggling to meet modern educational needs when you're working with buildings that are 75 years old. So that is sort of a quick summary of our Neighborhood Meetings. And then, as you know, and I'm sure most of you participated in our survey, and want to let you know what we learned from that. We had an excellent staff response with 250 staff members. We have K-12 faculty of roughly over 350, so it was a very good return rate from folks who participated on that end. And then in the community responses, both parents but also community members, almost 1,200 responses to our survey. I'm going to start with the staff and what we learned, because I think the results were a little more stark than perhaps for the community responses. So as you look at our staff survey, when we asked this question, "Would you support a sixth grade addition to Henry James Memorial School?", if you know anything about surveying, 80/20 results are pretty significant. And here we have about 80% of our faculty saying they would support a sixth grade move to Henry James. When we asked the question the same way for the 5-6 school, there was support, but you could see that it dropped significantly, much more like the 60/40 range in terms of what our faculty thought about the notion of that particular school. We also, if you took our survey, you'll remember there was a ranking question, and this is a quick snapshot of how faculty ranked it. The one most to the left there is current structure, and you could see by far, the third choice for our faculty was keeping existing structure as the best method. If you go all the way to the right, that's adding sixth grade to Henry James, and you could see far more first and second place rankings by the faculty with that, with the middle pod of responses being the 5-6 school. When we asked the question a slightly different way, "Where do you believe the most effective location is for grade six?", you can see that the percentages support the way we asked the question previously, but it's actually less than 18% of people who said the most effective place for it is current structure. So that certainly made us think, our educators are telling us that maybe we need to think differently about where sixth grade is placed. We had one other question, which was really about, some of our plans called for new buildings as opposed to renovated buildings. This was a question we were trying to get at, "Would the faculty worry about the disruption?" And you can see by far, the answer was, "It doesn't matter as long as the needs are addressed", was the response. When you turn to the community survey, you can see a little bit of a different take on it, although there remained a decent support for moving a sixth grade addition to Henry James. Not nearly like the teachers, but it's about a 55% response rate on a yes of, "Would you support a sixth grade addition to Henry James?". And I think one of the opportunities we have now, as this conversation pivots, is maybe explaining where that gap is between why community members and parents are saying, "We could support it," but that educators are saying, "We really support it at 80/20 percentage," and exploring that conversation as a community over the next few months. When you had the community survey and asked the fifth and sixth grade question, you can see this is where the support, I don't have that slide in there. The fifth and sixth grade question, it dropped down to about a third of people that would support that option, and that's why the Board of Ed in its meetings last week took it off. So back to the ranking question here, and you can see certainly on the community side, the leftmost slide, part of the slide, is existing structure. The fifth and sixth grade in the middle, you can see that that model had most people answering that that was their third choice. And then this on the far right is where people were ranking the sixth grade to Henry James option. So this was also the last question on the community survey about tax impact, and I think that's certainly something that the Board of Finance is going to want to continue to talk about. And this was saying that roughly two-thirds of people are saying, "We support the notion of doing something about our aging facilities and answering the demographics, but it's got to be handled correctly in terms of tax impact." With a third saying that the answer was already, I'm sorry, that's the slide I want to be on. Let you take that in for a minute. I was on the wrong thing? Okay? So again, I think it's an interesting opportunity for us to pivot the conversation. The Board of Ed has determined that we are down to really two options, an option where we're looking at a potential of a sixth grade wing at Henry James, or maintaining our existing structure and an elementary renewal plan that starts with Latimer Lane School. So with that said, I'm going to have our partner in this work, Jeff Wazinski from Tecton Architects, walk you through the remaining two options that the Board of Ed has.
Guess I'm a little shorter than you. Thank you. My name is Jeff Wazinski. I'm a principal at Tecton Architects. I guess I'm the one outsider from the community tonight, but I've been at so many community meetings, I've discussed carpooling with a few of the residents. So we have two options to go over. We're going to give the high-level overview, and we've took out the numbers, we took out the letters, and we really just called them sixth grade addition plus Latimer, and then elementary renewal. So I'm going to go over the sixth grade one first, and there's a chart that I think most are familiar with that have attended the Neighborhood Meetings, and I'm going to walk you through this for those that are not familiar with it. So first, starting from left to right, on the left side is the building name, and then you have your current grade configuration, so it shows all the K6, starting from bottom on up. K6 schools, pre-K is at Squadron Line, and then you have Latimer, I'm sorry, Latimer back to K6, and then Henry James, seven through eight. Next is the current enrollment for each of the schools. The only anomaly there is that you have to add 101 to the 601 for Squadron Line because of, that's the only school that has the pre-K, but I wanted to keep apples to apples as we move along. The next column is the projected enrollment, and what this projected enrollment represents, there's a smaller number in parentheses below that, that's not in bold, and it's the highest enrollment for that school in a 10-year window. And for those that have been following along since we started about a year and a half ago, some of those numbers have changed, because the projected enrollment is measured every October, based on data that's given to the state from the community. So we, over in October of 2019, we then inserted those new numbers and re-projected, and these, so these are the most current projections. So that's projected enrollment, highest enrollment for 10-year window. And then here's the proposed grade configuration. So you can see Henry James changes to a 6 to 8, top-down, 6 to 8, and then you'll see pre-K through 5 with underneath in parentheses RSG, which is the Ready, Set, Go program. So this was a response to looking at spreading out some of those specialized programs geographically throughout the community, something that we heard at the last public forum. And the pre-K to 5, I'll get to in a minute, it provides a little bit of more flexibility from a space planning perspective in each of the schools. So then, the projected enrollment with, on one column, it's no redistricting, and then on the next column, it's equalizing the student population. Is the answer one extreme or the other? Probably not. It's probably somewhere in the middle. We need to take a harder look at capacities, but this, I think, just gives you a good representation. If you pull sixth grade out of each of those schools, you can see, I'll pick on Latimer, second one down, the current enrollment's 445, projected enrollment was 554, but if you pull sixth grade out, you're at 464. And then the last column is proposed project type. And for those, again, that have followed along, I've had, we've had various different options where we considered renovate as new for one particular site and new for another. The reality is, once a overall master plan is implemented, each one of these sites should really be studied for renovate as new and new configurations for a cost-benefit analysis. So, and we'll show you in the detail if you have questions on that later. So that's kind of the high-level overview of the sixth grade, Henry James plus Latimer, and you'll see in the site plan, we showed this, I believe at the last public forum, where the yellow indicates building additions, the gray Loop Road was an attempt to try to relieve some of the pressure on queuing along Firetown Road. And then really, what you'd need to think of this as is a test fit that shows you can get all the fields, you can maintain the tennis courts if you wanted to, that just were redone, you can provide proper orientation of the fields and still add to the building without too much disruption. And then from a building perspective, so now we've kind of turned the building from the site plan, so Firetown Road would be on the bottom of this slide, if you will. And then those that are familiar and drive by on a daily basis, the blue indicates where the building additions have gone on, so the auditorium on the left and then the media center kind of in the middle of the plan. But the purple on this plan represents what a sixth grade addition, two-story sixth grade addition would mean or could be located. Should it, could it be there? Yes, it could be other portions of the building as well, but just from a graphical standpoint, that's kind of the footprint you need for sixth grade. And then you'll see a smaller piece added to the cafeteria. The other piece that needs to be studied as this plan progresses is the core spaces, the cafeterias, the gyms, all of the library, the media center, make sure that you adhere to kind of the state standards, but they're adequate for that increased population. So I'm sorry, going to jump back one second. One thing that I didn't cover here is the middle school population, which I think is an important piece on this one, which it's the same, it's 1,128, so it's the 735 projected and then that 390-plus that you pull from the sixth of each of the elementary schools. I just want to make sure, understand kind of the basics there on that. Okay? And then the second option, again, we called elementary renewal, and that's simply really looking at each of the elementaries' current configuration. So those are the elementaries' current grade configuration, remains for the most part the same. The current enrollment, again, consistent with the last kind of chart I showed you, we're looking at the possibility, and this isn't set in stone, where you could kind of distribute pre-K. We did hear some feedback during the Neighborhood Meetings that it was of interest in less transitions, but needs to be studied. Same philosophy here, 7-8 stays the way it is. Your first column is not, no redistricting, so this is just takes the highest projected enrollment over that 10 years, and that's what the schools look like. So you have to, that shows that you have to do something on capacity side of the equation for some of these schools, without a doubt. And then the extreme other opposite is equalizing. Again, should the answer be somewhere in between? Probably. And then the last column, again, is the renovate as new or new, and the reason why you would want to study both is because of the costs, which I'm going to kind of give you a very high-level overview of the costs as well. So on the top is the first option I reviewed, sixth grade plus Latimer. And the reason why they were coupled is because the sixth grade addition doesn't necessarily buy you enough time capacity-wise at Latimer, and I think that's an important piece to understand. It buys you time, it just doesn't buy you an awful lot, because when you start mapping these projects out, these projects take from start to finish, one project, anywhere from four to five years. So again, we have to work that into the plan, so you can see the impact that it has. So top sixth grade addition plus Latimer, so the top number that I didn't bold is overall total project cost. So that's all the costs associated with delivering a building, whether it's the equipment inside the building, the architects and engineers inside the building talking, the bricks, mortar, all of it, that's $66 million. And then the bottom piece is the net cost to Simsbury after the reimbursement. So there's a lot of analysis behind that that we can kind of walk you through if that's of interest. And then, oop, and then the bottom one is an elementary renewal, and that would be, Latimer would be the first step in that one, and you see the total project cost there is the 45 million, and then the cost to Simsbury is 31. and then the cost to Simsbury is 31. So you can start to see the implications from a cost perspective. So just some quick comments on cost methodology. And what we like to do is, so we're not picking the highest-end buildings, we're not picking the lowest end, we're shooting right in the middle. We want a very good durable base cost building that's going to last you that 25, 30 years without having to really touch much of it. So that's where those historical averages come from. They are escalated to the midpoint of what could be the construction, to 2022, for step one. And then, obviously, you know, there should be some adjustments as a preferred option kind of comes to the, comes to the top with the community so that we can kind of look at it if there's any premiums for phasing or site logistics. But the last piece, and we bolded it, which is, I think, important here, is your current reimbursement rate from the state. And this is last published. I didn't check today if they published anyone's. I think these are 17, 18 still. But renovate as new is 34%, and new construction is 10% less. And that's why, when I say we should analyze, or the community should analyze new versus renovate as new, it's a good exercise to see the cost benefit analysis of both. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Erin Murray for discussion about the educational models.
Good evening. I'm Erin Murray. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. I actually arrived in Simsbury in 2004 as the principal of Henry James, and a few years later stepped into this position and have been here in Simsbury for that amount of time. Tonight, what we'd like to do is to give you an overview of middle-level education, the effective elements, pros, cons, feedback that we've received, and potential benefits that it might look like in a sixth grade at Henry James. So, to give you, step back a little bit, and give you some history of conversations that have taken place over the last 15 years. In 2006, '07, there was a 5-6 committee that got together to talk about relocating our fifth and sixth grade classes to Squadron Line. After a year-long conversation, that was something that was not going to move forward. But out of it, we learned a lot about our fifth and sixth grade program. And these were the recommendations that came forward. And what we tried really hard to do during the 2006, or 2007, 2008 school year was to implement these recommendations that came from a real deep study of middle-level education at that time. The other piece of conversations that we've had, the District Facilities and Enrollment Committee has been in place for about 15 years. And at each of those meetings, when we would discuss demographics, the question of if and when should we move sixth grade to Henry James? It was an ongoing conversation that we had had. And again, so this isn't new conversation about either a 5-6 or moving sixth grade to our middle school. But it gives you a little bit of an insight to the conversations that have been taking place over the last 15 years as we move forward. So what we did over the last several months is went into the research. We wanted to provide you tonight a national perspective, a regional perspective, and a local perspective. We all know that sixth grade has been a major crossroad grade level for those developmental years of sixth graders. So it's important for us to think about where and should they be educated, and what's the proper environment during this developmental time for students. So what is a middle school? A middle school or middle-level education is talking about students that are 11 to 14, 10 to 13, fifth grade through eighth grade. And there's lots of various terms and ways in which researchers talk about middle school. And these are important elements that are really repeatedly discussed in literature as we go forward. Obviously, that 5-6 grade level, a team model. That's what we currently have at Henry James. But to ensure that there are smaller, it's not 300-plus kids moving about, it's, they're smaller groups of students, so the team model. A focus on educating the whole child, helping ease that transition between childhood and adolescence, to create an advisory time for students. So what we want in middle-level students is to have opportunities to connect with at least one adult, if not more. Emphasis is to really understand the needs and interests of middle-level students, to provide them an opportunity for some exploratory learning opportunities at a middle level. Obviously, using multimedia. Sixth graders could be assigned a one-to-one Chromebook, just as our seventh and eighth graders are as well. Obviously, the emphasis on social emotional growth, that we want all students to be able to learn, but we want to make sure that we're supporting that social emotional aspect of them. And of course, leadership opportunities for students, and especially students that are in eighth grade. So, elements, this comes from, this, we believe, Keys to Educating Young Adolescents from the Association for Middle-Level Education. And what we want to make sure is that we understand that this is one of the major times of brain growth for these young adolescents. When I was the building principal, I would talk to parents as they were entering. We sometimes think that this isn't the time that kids learn the most, but from birth it is. It's a great learning opportunity. And we want to ensure that they have access to the best programs, the best opportunities that they have, as we currently do in their program. But that's what a middle school would want to do as well. That there's rigorous, challenging, exploratory opportunities, and that we continue to find ways to support those developmental, social, and emotional needs. So through the literature that we've gone through, and we will supply a bibliography on our website of the various pieces of literature. And there's pros and cons to all of this. So for those of us that obviously know these children, it is a remarkable stage of life. For those of us that have raised children, I know, I raised three children. At the same time, I taught kindergarten, I taught high school, I moved into administrative position. I was assistant principal at 678 at a 5-6 building, and then came here to Simsbury. And in all that time, we have to understand, I had to understand the students that I was working with, along with my own children, and it is quite a developmental stage. Sixth grade moved to the middle school would certainly have to be a bridge year. We'd have to really think through what the program, it's not stepping right into what we know as seventh grade right now. It would look similar to what we currently have, but providing a very well-articulated transition plan for students coming. That's what's necessary for them. Obviously, in a middle school, there's opportunities for extracurricular activities, clubs, sports, theater. And that, a middle school, that the facilities are developmentally appropriate, like a library, media center, or the art rooms. So that's one of the, those are the pros that we saw through the literature. There's several more, but these were some that we wanted to highlight. Obviously, when we look at the drawbacks for students at a middle level, most of the literature, a lot of the literature, talks about how many large communities, cities, were looking at closing middle schools and reinstituting the K8 buildings. And obviously, the same kind of information that they talked about with that is the same kinds of drawbacks that you see with middle level. So moving, the transitions that we talk about, anytime a student moves, there is a dip in academic performance on standardized measures. That's been noted for several years. They say that behavior issues tend to rise in the middle school. Possibility, and yes, that can be the case. Exposure to older teens definitely have a negative impact on students, something we need to think about. And middle school is typically much bigger in numbers than what our elementary schools are. Did I go too far? So these, I went right into yours. So these are some of the national definitions and ideas about middle-level education. So Scott Baker, who's currently our principal at Henry James, is going to carry it through to give you more information about middle-level education.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out tonight. And what you see in front of you is a little edge of speak. Edge of speak, if you haven't heard it, the district reference group. These are towns that are similar to ours, both in like property taxes, education level, income levels. And oftentimes, we compare ourselves to these towns when we look at testing and those sorts of things. And if you have really good eyesight, you can probably see that up there. But on the left-hand side are the Derg A schools. And all of those listed there have a 6-8 structure, and a 5-8 structure. On the right-hand side, you have the Derg B schools. And that column in the middle there have 6-8 structure. And then on the right is like a gathering of other structures. We see a number of structures near us, Avon, Farmington, with the 5-8 structure, and then the 5-6 and the 7-8 structure. And then there's some others. But we stand alone with Cheshire in the K6, 7-8 model. So it's just important to take a look around when we are, when we're doing this. And so, from this point forward, Erin has really taken us nicely through the literature. And I'm going to walk us through, and some of this will sound like a repeat to some of the literature, but findings we've had from talking to people and from, and from talking to our own community. Because we could do a lot with the literature, but everything's local. We have a very unique community. And so I think the values and the input of our staff, our leaders, our kids, our teachers, and our own context is really important to take into account when we, when we go through here. So I rushed into saying, I got excited about talking about the district reference groups. But a little about myself, you know, I've been at Henry James for two years. Sixth grade is something that's really important to me. I've experienced it at all avenues of my career and personal life. I taught in a 6-8 structure. I was a sixth grade teacher and team leader for math and social studies. Came to Henry James as a department supervisor, but then went to the elementary level. Spent many years at Terrifield School and saw the wonderful things that we could do in the sixth grade at that school, was part of that 5-6 study, and then returned back to the middle school. So I've seen both sides of it. I've seen what it looks like in sixth grade from the teaching side of it in a 6-8 school. And I've seen what it is to lead a school that has a sixth grade in it. And I also have a little seventh grader at home who just finished sixth grade in a 6-8 school. So, one of the important things we did is going back to what Mr. Sullivan talked about, that 80/20 number from the staff. We had an administrative council meeting recently, and Mr. Curtis tasked us with, wow, like, that's a pretty striking number from our staff. Why do you, why does all of these curriculum leaders and principals think that is the case? And so we really, when we took the feedback from that whole group, the leadership of our, of our district, they really broke it down to four parts. The curriculum, learning environment, the facility, and social emotional supports. And so curriculum, we had some conversations. Like curriculum is mostly organized K5, 6-8, 9-12. When you look at like how units of study and that sort of thing are organized, and textbooks, and that sort of stuff. When you look at the STEM opportunities, the science labs, the opportunity for health and wellness teaching at the middle level for sixth graders, that is something that came up. Content specialization for teachers, because the content has gotten increasingly more rigorous in sixth grade. So the ability to do that for the sixth graders and have our teachers specialize a little bit more. Have the support of department supervisors right in the school. And then the opportunity for teacher collaboration. When we look at the social and emotional support, a lot of the leaders talked about the advisory structure we have. It's called connections at Henry James. Age-appropriate peer groups. And then the ability to really address a transition year. When we have the 7-8, we'll talk about this more when I get into some feedback. You're always in transition. You transition in, and you transition out. And then looking at learning environment, the leaders talked about the teaming, the middle-level environment, and the need for independence in the, in the early adolescent years, and how to build that in. Additionally, extracurriculars were discussed, which has come up over and over again, and clubs. And then the facilities, looking at our new library and media center, which we just opened a week ago. It's pretty awesome. If you have a chance, I'd love to come show you. And having these open spaces and the STEM spaces for students. And then, at facilities and enrollment, last week, a parent had a wonderful idea. I don't know why I didn't think of it as well. Hey, why don't we go talk to some middle schoolers who just made this transition? Ask them what they think about, about this transition? And would they have rather been in sixth grade at the middle school? Or what was their thoughts about their elementary school experience? And so from the students, we really saw themes of independence and transition and leadership. A lot of those concepts came up when I was sitting down at lunch, talking with them. I did promise a few of them that I would read, like, live on TV, some of their quotes. So let me read a couple other quotes for you. So one student said, "Being in elementary school so long, the transition was earth-shattering for me. Maybe if we switched a little earlier, I wouldn't have been so surprised." Another said, "I came from a sixth grade in Texas to Simsbury in the middle school, and then went back to elementary school in the sixth grade. I hated being treated like a baby again." Another one said, "What would happen to the sixth grade teachers?" So, kind of humorous, but actually, that's a really important question if we get further down the road in this kind of thing. So he's very forward-thinking, maybe a future educator. Another was an awesome statement. He says, "I think it's a really good idea, but except, can you please not do it next year? I don't want my brother here." But then in all seriousness, another said, right, you know, right when you get used to it, you have to leave. But then another one said, "I loved my elementary school, and I was a book buddy, and I would have maybe not gotten to see my kindergarten friend once a week." So we've had a little bit of a mix, but certainly, most of the kids were tilted towards wanting that independence and enjoying it once they got to Henry James. I also had a great idea. I had a captive audience, a couple of you here tonight. So some of the parents are doing a double night from Henry James. We had a PTC meeting last night. So thanks for heading out twice in one week. But I asked them as well, like, as parents, you've made the transition. What are your thoughts about this? And so, those comments really centered, there were a number of conversations about the bus, about staying young, about the transition and such. So, I mean, one parent mentioned that, like, they moved to Simsbury because they looked at all the structures around and saw the K6 and were attracted to that, but have second thoughts now with a student up at high school and one in the middle school. And then maybe it would have been better for them to have sixth grade in the, in the elementary school. She was just saying, "The kids just seem too big for elementary school right around now. It seems like a good idea in September, October, November, but starts seeming like a tricky idea as you go like March to June." Many of the parents talked about the leadership opportunities, but then a couple others said, you know, "I don't know, my child didn't really experience too many leadership opportunities in sixth grade." But again, another said, "It just was such a culture shock for their child to enter Henry James, and that six is too young to do that." So, we had a really nice discussion at the PTC meeting last night, and I thanked the parents for giving us some of their thoughts on that as well. We did a lot of talking to parents out at the elementary level. It was good to get the voice of those who've been through the transition as well. So when we get down to it, it's really this final slide, I think. I hope I can try to change the conversation a little bit, because when we think about, we've been saying, sixth grade, sixth grade, sixth grade. In my mind, I see my sixth grade daughter, who weighs like 75 pounds and has pigtails and rainbow clips in her hair, and say, "Oh my gosh, I don't want like the sixth grade." You have a visual of the sixth grader. But I hope, as a community, we talk about what's gained for our entire educational experience here. It's not just thinking about that one sixth grader, but what is gained by bringing sixth grade to the Henry James? There's a whole economic side of it and demographic side of it, which we heard about. This is all about, what are the, what do we gain by doing this? And so, we've put together a few things. We know what we're concerned about. We know we're concerned about the bus. We know we're concerned about the discipline. We know we're concerned about the leadership opportunities sixth grade have at the elementary schools, and the great job we've done in our elementary schools in sixth grade. But I think it's, it's important to say, what do we get if we do this? So going through, again, this is breaking my rule of how small a font should be in a PowerPoint, but I'll go through it. One thing we, one thing we gain by bringing sixth grade is the teaming concept to the sixth graders, and the opportunity to collaborate, for those teachers to collaborate. It's, that's something we've worked hard to do as a district on our early release days. But we're talking four times a year they get to do that. And in the collaboration that occurs in the hallway, just anecdotally, is so powerful when you're talking about delivering the same kind of content. Consistency of delivery of content, and then delivery overseen by the department supervisors, I think, is something that we gain. An appropriate approach to health and wellness, where they get health more frequently than they do at the elementary level, I think at this critical time in their growth and development, is something that they would gain by coming to Henry James. And then the school in general, what I think we gain is three years of middle school. We can create a more gradual transition to the high school. There would be increased connections to the school, more staff and student investment in each other. And the one thing I hear from parents the most as a principal of Henry James, besides homework, is that connection. That it's really hard to feel connected to that school because we're in and we're out as parents. we're in and we're out as parents. We have some wonderfully volunteered parents, but I notice a lot of the parents that are coming to volunteering are the ones that have had children every two years. So they're, they're going to be a family of Henry James for six years or so, and so then feel engaged. So by having a three-year school, you have a little bit more engagement with the families. The social emotional focus of the whole school is on the early adolescent. And then when we look at special education, you know, this is something we felt hard at Terriffill School, being the size we are. We had years where our special education teacher was doing A, apple app and systems of equations with kids in China because a special education teacher has to range all the grades in some of the smaller schools. So all of our specialized supports at Henry James could be to the early adolescent. The one-to-one Chromebook initiative we funded this year has been hugely successful at Henry James. Hard to replicate at the elementary schools just because of the infrastructure needed to support it. You have to have a certain scale in order to support that. The age-appropriate clubs, activities and intramurals is something I'm sure sixth graders are craving. And the five-six study that we did almost 15 years ago, we tried to do that. We had like a town fun run and that sort of stuff, but all those efforts to try to get those elementary schools together has just been prohibitive because it's hard to transport across town and that sort of thing. And then finally, like the, what is biggest to, for me, like I said, as the Terriffill principal, was that leadership we had for the sixth grade and I, I want to build more of that at Henry James, but it's hard to convince eighth graders to lead seventh graders because they're so close in age. And some of the seventh graders are older than some of the eighth graders, if they've, if they've held out for kindergarten or something like that. So it's tricky, but the, I, I envision the role we could, we could have the eighth graders take with the sixth graders and then I think we could probably do a similar thing with the fifth graders and the kindergartners that we do now. So sounds biased, but I think it's important to just have a list of like, this is what we could do that we probably couldn't do in our current, or what we can't do in our current setting of having the sixth graders. So I know it's a long list, it's a lot of talking, but I'm going to hand things over to Sue Salina, who's going to bring us through the next part of the program. Thank you.
Okay. So I know that's a lot to take in kind of quickly and hopefully you've been to more than one of these meetings, but we're going to open it up for public comment now. I just want to remind everybody, this really has been about us figuring out the best way to bring the school system to the next place. So the best way to take care of our buildings and be stewards of these buildings and to find out what the community thinks is best, but also to hear what our educators who are working with our kids every day think are best. So with that in mind, I want to remind you that we are all volunteers up here, we're all taxpayers in town. This affects us as much as it affects all of you. Half of us have kids in school, so we're living these decisions ourselves and we are anxious to hear what you all have to say. So three minutes, name and address and two microphones. Thanks.
Nobody?
Hello? I guess I'll start.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Stay closer. Hello, my name is Megan Paglis. I live at 181 Hoskins Road in the Squadron Line District. I also was SHS class of 98 and I come from a Squadron Line family. Through this ongoing conversation, the focus until today has been on the simple numbers. While clearly the numbers are important, particularly at Latimer and Squadron, the educational impact hasn't been an equal driver of this process. Why are we narrowing choices down before we consider that? The trend towards the six through eight middle schools in the last 25 years has largely been a reactionary change across the country. Districts dealing with declining enrollment move sixth to middle school, redistrict and close a school. And others dealing with increased enrollment do it as a way to relieve the pressure at the elementary schools. It is easier logistically, we take out one whole grade per school and suddenly you have a lot more room. However, we all pay the taxes here because of the schools. We need to have higher standards for the decisions we make than simply reacting. Every conversation needs to include, how will this hurt or benefit our children? How will this change education here in Simsberry? Moving sixth grade to the middle school will impact every single student who moves through our schools from our current first graders on. Because we have 25 years of schools moving to this model, we have the benefit of looking at real outcomes. Anecdotes and opinions, feelings are all fine, but as we try to teach our children to use logic and research, and research, challenge their opinions and preferences, we too need to apply careful research to the decisions that impact them. This needs to be evidence-based and the evidence for sixth graders in middle school is not good. Duke has the definitive study and found among other things that discipline issues for sixth graders double, drug-related incidents quadruple, and these increases follow them through high school. They do not level out. Math and reading scores are higher for sixth graders in elementary schools than for their middle school peers. A later study also found that when we move children to middle school early, girls develop negative body image at an earlier age. While I understand that there are perceived academic benefits to moving sixth grade to Henry James, I would challenge everyone to think carefully about how true that is in practice. Our schools are excellent. I have been consistently impressed with the education, experience and support my kids have received. I suggest that unless we see a reason why the K-six model is not working for our children and a clear academic and whole person benefit to changing things, that we do not. My closing point is that we moved to Simsberry because we wanted the neighborhood schools. We specifically looked in Squadron Line District because we had a strong preference for a larger elementary school. When redistricting happens, as I know it will one way or another, please do not homogenize the schools. Keep some small like Terriffill and some like Squadron big. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Samantha Bell. I live at 38 Mountain Road in Terriffill and I'm also a Simsberry alum, class of 2000. I had a couple of questions, more so than statements. The first one was regarding the cost analysis that was done and I'm wondering if there is a difference in the cost when we are redistricting versus not redistricting. To me, it seems like there, you know, it's one thing to homogenize a school or not, and I'm just wondering what the difference in the cost analysis for something like that would be. The second thing that I find very interesting and somewhat disconcerting as a citizen is the survey and its lack of responses from the community and that's frustrating. And I'm also very pleased and happy to hear that our staff and our teachers have been responding to that because I think that their input and their opinions are invaluable. They are with our children, sometimes more than we're with them ourselves. So I would be curious to know if it would be possible to extend to our teachers and ask them to do more than they need to do, but possibly get more of their opinions on these things. It's important to know what they're thinking and why they're thinking it, especially when there is a difference in what the community members are seeing and what they're, what they're seeing. So I would ask if maybe we could ask that of our teachers. I know it's a big ask, but I think it would be something important for us to, to explore further.
Hi. I'm usually...
One sec.
Sure. Oh, great.
So on the cost question relative to when you're redistricting or not, I, I do believe that's kind of the next layer in, in that option because I, I think, like I said, I don't think the answer is either one extreme or the other. It, it's taking a really hard look at the capacity of each of the schools, seeing what's least disruptive from redistricting, which ultimately will help, you know, the size of, or scope of what you're renovating, you know? So, so I, I think it's going to be a balance of, of both of those elements to get there.
Hi. Jessica Perez, 102 North Saddle Ridge. I'm a squadron parent, just going to leave it there and speak loudly. Thank you for taking the time to do this tonight. I have a few questions I'm hoping you can address tonight. The first was a cost question on the slide. It was not quite clear to me if that first number was the cost to do both adding the sixth grade building and also renovating Latimer and then the one below was just the Latimer, so, or if it was something else, just a clarification on that one. Second question is, has any, have we gone through the process of thinking about a pre-K-K option as a, a new building somewhere to alleviate some of the stress on the schools? And perhaps you haven't, I just haven't paid attention to that. If that's true, I'm sorry. The last question is, if you could address some of the points on the slide and also some of the address, uh, points that my fellow parent made about the downside to adding six to school, that would be, or to a, a six through eight school, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Give us one sec. I can tell you, we haven't looked at it. I'm sorry.
There was, there was some discussion very early on about a pre-K-K, but we didn't really explore that model. And as, as far as...
There, there were certainly some concerns about length of bus rides for very little kids in a centralized pre-K-K. I mean, that certainly came up in the early part of the discussions, but it, it, it didn't kind of make its way through to preferred options.
I mean, it fell off early.
Yeah.
I, I, I think if, it fell off sort of way back, you know, about 18 months ago, that, that was probably something we looked at at the very beginning. And again, when we originally, back in 2006, '07, looked at moving fifth, sixth grade to Squadron, people were upset about the bus ride. So I think that felt like a little bit of a non-starter for people.
Jess, I remember too, it was an additional facility and initially one of the charges was trying to find efficiencies as, as well, and that was adding another building to what we already had. So that was kind of looked at as a, a negative at the time.
The other question was on the cost slide.
Yeah, so it, it's how you described it at first, the, the top option, that's six, seven, eight. That number is inclusive of both the sixth grade wing and a renovation at Latimer. And the second number is just, the second option is just the renovation at Latimer.
And then the last question with respect to a discussion of the downside to adding a six to a six-eight school.
So as we think about the literature that you can see, the, the types of things that I mentioned in regard to the transition, the, the lowering of the standardized assessments, there's various reasons. We think that, you know, with a six-eight school, our sixth grade right now is extremely strong. What they don't have are the collective resources that sixth grade could have in a new facility with, whether it be science opportunities. Scott talked about the teacher collaboration, kids coming together in sixth grade rather than in seventh grade and then going out after eighth grade to the high school.
I can jump in a little bit. This is something we've also looked at, you know, we, when we study our standardized test data, you know, we see a decline six, six to seventh grade, so the seventh graders take a little bit of a hit. And when you reference a lot of these studies, many of these studies say then the, the performance continues to decline through middle school. It's not, that's not the case at Henry James for the past three years. The performance takes a dip in seventh grade and then increases in eighth grade. But we, when we say, oh, is this typical? So we look to our peer districts and say, you know, is this common? And if you see a, like in West Hartford, they have the K-five structure, you see a decline in, in their performance, fifth to sixth grade and not so much as sixth to seventh grade. So it's when you make that transition. I think part of it, you know, and this is not, this is less of a scientific, but maybe my own opinion, is that in the elementary school, you're spending more hours on really structured literacy instruction and math instruction and less on health, science, social studies and all of that. So when you get that into the middle school, those tested areas, we're maybe not spending as much time on, but then students catch up because they're doing more stuff in the content and we're asking a more difficult content questions as they, as increase in the grades. Right? I think that's part of it and part of it's just, it's a transition and you're trying to make your way this first month or two and your focus is on meeting new friends and that kind of stuff. And so that transition is always going to bring a little bit of a swirl to kids regardless of when it happens.
Hi, Crystal Gonzalez, 16 Worcester Road, Terriffill. So I wanted to start off by thanking you guys for hearing this loud and clear. That was big and you can see that from the community reaction. I understand that we have an issue with projected population growth, which some schools are already feeling. I also understand that we have a solution where we can renovate all of the schools that per the study are all in need of renovation. All the staff support that as well and it would create more capacity. In regards to reconfiguration of our grade levels, while the information that's been presented, you know, as a potential solution, I think that it, it's, you know, we appreciate it, you know, what Erin, Scott, what you've said, what you've showed us, the survey that Neil presented, there were some data integrity concerns with the survey and we also didn't see the full target population and then where the respondents, what percentage of that was relative to, to understand like the full scope of those results that were presented. The other piece is, you know, there is a clear impact to the community and we all understand there will be an impact to children psychologically, academically, emotionally, et cetera. And there was a lot of good, you know, quantitative data presented, but to echo others that have already spoken, you know, I haven't seen any cases or any qualitative data that really would support that there's, this would be a favorable move, taking our children who are already doing very well in their current elementary structure and moving them into a new school and a new structure. As well as we did talk about other, you know, cities or towns that have done that and, you know, there are a lot of favorable comments and unfavorable as well, but we don't really know what the true impact is to make a decision. And looking at the options, you know, what confuses me is some of the gaps in vetting the options related to the community and the impact to the children. And I know Jeff's done a great job presenting a lot of the information, but there are still some areas that have, have not been fully explored. And when we look at that and have lower cost options that are more clear with lower impact, it's difficult to support a higher cost option. As far as redistricting, you know, I just ask that there be some thoughtful consideration for the existing families in the school system. I know this is a long-term plan, but when we do this, I know exceptions can be made and maintaining those students in their current environment if possible. I know it won't be easy and that, all that being said, if a decision is made to renovate all of the schools, I, I would like to reemphasize that from what we heard, have heard, we all agree that the Simsberry school system is great. We've heard from folks that have children in the school system and folks that don't.
Crystal, you're at three minutes, if you could wrap up, please.
I am, thank you. And what we agree is that, you know, the school system does impact real estate values, traffic, et cetera. So we do make a decision to renovate. I do urge everyone to support any reasonable cost associated with those renovations with the same energy that you all have already had. I think it's very important for our community and for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
And while I cherry picked some slides for tonight's presentation, the full survey
results are available on the website.
Were we actually able to ask citizens to yield time? Could I ask like a citizen that chooses not to speak in case I go over, could they yield time to us?
As long as you keep it reasonably close to three minutes.
Well, if someone, if I need extra time, if someone could lend me their time, if they don't plan to speak, I would appreciate it. Anyway, I, I've been, my name's Jade Hoy, 48 Hayes Road, people of Simsberry. I've just been skeptical of the survey ever since it was out, as you know, it's in the Hartford Current, mostly because it's anonymous and anybody could have filled it out multiple times. At the time that I spoke with the board, over 900 responses from parents and community members, quote unquote, but we can't actually say that. We don't know who it was. And it stands to reason, the, the staff survey, it turns out... that chooses not to speak, in case I go over, could they yield time to us?
As long as you keep it reasonably close to three minutes.
Well, if someone, if I need extra time, if someone could lend me their time, if they don't plan to speak, I would appreciate it. Anyway, I, I've been, my name's Jade Hoy, 48 Hayes Road, people of Simsbury. I've just been skeptical of the survey ever since it was out, as you know, it's in the Hartford Current, mostly because it's anonymous. If anybody could have filled it out multiple times. At the time that I spoke with the board, over 900 responses from parents and community members, quote unquote. But we can't actually say that. We don't know who it was. And it stands to reason, the, the staff survey, it turns out, was verified according to the board. So at that time, it was said that the, the setting up a Google account was an obstacle and was bypassed in the interest of time. But hundreds of people showed up at a public forum in a cold, wet night, and that was not an obstacle. In addition to that, I was able to locate a, you know, an article on the web about setting up a Gmail account in less than two minutes, so easy your grandma could do it. Now, additionally, and more concerning, I was able to create a document with verification. So as a citizen, you could fill out your name, you could put in your address and phone number optionally, and get a receipt without even having a Gmail account. So just to be clear, you do not need a Gmail account to have filled out a verified resident survey. So this was a conscious decision, according to the board. And as it turns out, there was only four and a half percent turnout. And, and, and we know this is actually lower because people filled it out multiple times.
I'm sorry, could I ask you to address the board?
I'm sorry.
Because that's what public audiences are.
Well, you know, it's only because the camera, I want you to see the camera. So additionally, I was able to add messaging at the top of the form to not fill out the survey more than once, to not share it on social media, and if there was confusion to reach out to the BOE. There's even an option to add a video link to the November public forum for reference. Also, I was concerned about why it took so long to get the survey out. But let's focus on the dilemma of the sixth grade configuration. But many people have talked about it, and I'm just going to cite the Duke, the very popular Duke study. Let me just see here. But I, I'm also concerned about build, the building of this wing, because the way I see it, it isolates the kids as, from part of the school. And I just, to me, it just doesn't seem right to put them in an isolated situation like that. I much prefer them being at the Terriffill School in the leadership roles. So, so anyway, we're still, we're still being, like, we, we were told kind of in Terriffill that closing the school is off the table.
Jade, you're at three minutes, if you could try to wrap.
Could anybody yield me their time? No? But if, if you listen to the language, it, it feels flexible. And it feels like every time we encounter a new situation, we're going to be faced with this option again. And so it's more like it's off the table for now. And so that concerns, that concerns me as far as the guarantee. And when I look at the numbers, the data, the school population's going to get so small if we lose the sixth grade. And I just worry that it's just going to be so obvious to close it. But anyway, getting back to that survey, my final point was, there was a discrepancy, and I was worried about this happening between what the staff was saying and what the people were saying. And also there seemed to me that there was a far greater weight given to the staff survey than it was to the citizen survey. It started the meeting the other day, it started today, it starts the, the actual paper. And, you know, it was talked for three minutes, even though it was, you know, far less of a group of people. So, again, I just want to just reiterate the fact that this is data that is being relied on.
Well, so let me answer some of your questions, if I can.
Sure.
The survey is strictly a tool for the Facilities Enrollment Task Force. The staff portion of it, it, it's not given more weight, but they're the ones who are educating our children, and their opinion does matter when we're trying to figure some of this out as far as the six, eight configuration or K6. So of course, we're going to give that some weight. As far as verifying who could fill out the survey, we didn't, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get more respondents to it. But I, we're not manipulating it nor relying on that as a sole tool to make a decision. It's just a small piece of the puzzle.
I, I understand that, but it's in the presentations, right?
Because we just want to, if we've asked you all to take it, we certainly want to let you know what we saw.
Right. I'm just saying, for people that are kind of not focused on the, the, the subject matter, it could be, you know, it's just, it's, it's not reliable.
And as far as, as far as the isolation of the sixth grade, I wouldn't say isolated so much as they're going to learn in their own section of the sixth grade if they're there, but they're certainly going to be in the cafeteria, the gym, the art room, the music room. So it's not like we're locking them in a corner of the school and not letting them out. They, they will certainly be moving about the building, but they will not be mixing with the seventh and eighth graders during the learning part, during their classes. So I hope that explains that a little bit.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's an ongoing process, and I do appreciate all that you do. I just try to be a vigilant citizen and on behalf of the people, and make sure that we get this decision right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Thompson, 24 Chestnut Hill, sixth grader in Tooton Hills. So she'll be here by the time we get through this stuff. I'm okay with the survey, okay with the options. My question is really kind of on, I don't know if it's you or the folks at the bonding side, but the fiduciary side of this job. So you're talking about phase one costs, and we've got after that phases two, three, four, five. And I'd really like to see like the whole cost figure. I'll be paying taxes here after mine's in college. Like my older one is done. So I think we as taxpayers, you, you have a sales pitch to make. And I think we have to see kind of like, how does this roll out over 30 years? What does it mean? I mean, I'm a supporter. We got to, you know, to keep the infrastructure on, so we have to do something. But I think the overall pitch beyond phase one has to be laid out for then the taxpayers to make a decision and vote on something to go forward with. The other question goes with the renovate or renovate as new. What I don't see in there, maybe it's just not in the package, is expansion, right? Because if we're renovating the same size, we're not adding seats. So maybe it's renovate with some addition is maybe the right way to pitch it, because we're going to have to add space to take on the 400 extra kids. So those are the thoughts I had. Thanks.
I'll just leave it. So I'll address the last question. Yes, the answer is addition and renovations. We talked a little bit about it at the neighborhood meetings, but yeah, that's the, the philosophy or the approach at this stage, so that you can basically build a new addition that's large enough to reasonably move some students into there and kind of safely renovate other portions of the building in a, in a reasonable fashion. So additions and renovations would be included.
And then to your point about the long phasing of the costs, that's something we would have to work on with the Board of Finance and how we want to move that forward over time. And taking it as one referendum at a time, because the beauty of the master plan overall is, as you get through one project, you reassess where you are, and then you see what your needs are for the next project, and then cross that out at that time. So it's a little, we could, I think at one point in time, we had a big, long ballpark number on all five buildings. Is that right?
That's correct.
It was somewhere around 150 million for the whole package. But again, that is going to be 2039. So...
Move the old renovation.
Right. 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 So I hope that clears that up a little.
Hello. I'd like to give a pretty unique perspective from my point of view. My name is Ashley Hernandez. I live at 21 Cooper Avenue in The Ridge at Talke Millen. So I am a new resident to the town. We, I have a unique perspective because I came from a town where my son is actually in the high school here, and my daughter is at Latimer Lane. So my son went from elementary school, fifth grade, into a middle school in sixth grade. And I don't want to get emotional, but that was really bad bullying from eighth grade to sixth grade. So that was a very big problem that we had to address as a family. And we had decided to actually look into other towns and other options. We had, at the time, moved to Newington temporarily. So I had him in the middle school in Newington, where it was a fifth to eighth grade. I was the PTO president for two years there. I really genuinely felt the fifth and sixth grade kids got lost in the mix. I also didn't actually feel the perspective of family involvement of being in a school for a longer period of time. As the PTO president, very much, many of the families didn't know how to be involved, because as we tried to run events and programs, meeting the needs of the fifth and sixth grade and the seventh and eighth grade was a constant challenge. So we really had a hard time of bringing the full community together and staying regularly involved. Then I looked into Simsbury Schools, and I very much enjoyed the fact that it was K36. So we moved here with that choice in mind, and also providing opportunity at the high school for my son. We've been here for nine months, and very shortly after moving here, it was very scary to learn about all of this redistricting and not really knowing and understanding what was going on, and also living in a very new community. Just moving my kids in to find out also, even in my community at The Ridge, that my daughter could potentially be redistricted, and she'd have to change again. I'm very happy to say, I just bought a house yesterday. We just got our offer accepted, and we live right down the street from Latimer Lane, so we are not getting redistricted. But overall, I came tonight just to kind of just listen in, and I just felt compelled to kind of give a different perspective. Being a PTO president for two years in a middle school that had such a wide range of kids, I just felt like the community was not as tight-knit in that type of environment, and kids very much got lost. And, and for my son to experience what he experienced for, from sixth grade, being in a school that had kids that were much, that were actually not even that much older, but just that difference, that, that two-year gap made a huge difference for him and, and his experience. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm afraid I'm going to knock this down, but I'm not as tall as the other guy. My name's Lisa Burke. I'm a squadron parent. We live at 20 Michael Road, Simsbury, Connecticut. I've only lived in town for about 13 years. My kids are fifth generation, so I've got, you know, I've got my chops in town. But I did want to first address the survey. I do research for a living. I literally write surveys every day for my life. So a four and a half percent response rate is actually so average, you wouldn't believe. So for an involved survey, 5% would be a nice response rate. So four and a half is good. If somebody's not connected to your brand at all, you're getting 2%. So, okay, on that, I might have written some of the questions a little different, but you can contact me next time. Pro bono, I'll help you write your survey questions. But that's a whole nother topic. But anyway, all of that joking aside, I am, you know, somewhat interested in some of the financial aspects of this. I know, and we haven't actually, I don't think, oh, I've only heard from one Latimer family, but I know Latimer's in a really bad way. So I am happy to see that Latimer's sort of the first wave, but I see kind of wave one being approached or discussed and how much all of that's going to cost. I'm very interested to see what the full plan would be, what all, you know, kind of where, where that's all going to be, because it's going to affect all of our taxes for a long time. So I very much support the investment in our schools. I think it's an investment in our property values as well. But I'm, I have some concerns around there, and I'd be interested to see further. And as far as keeping the sixth grade, if we are going to be moving the sixth grade to the middle school, which is not my personal favorite choice, but if we do go that route, I do definitely support keeping them sort of in their own wing and sort of easing them into middle school, because I, I do have a lot of concerns about sixth grade in those schools. Those are my points. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Wilson, 23 Worcester Road. I have two beautiful, right, Mrs. Wolf, beautiful children. And I have an eighth grade boy at Henry James who I can specifically speak to the transition dip. And what concerned me more about is academic dip, because I knew that would come back, was the emotional dip. And to us, that was the biggest impact. So for me, I really, and, and in true transparency, I teach in a six, eight middle school. I understand the benefits as a staff member collaborating. I understand how our standards are written, six through 12. I get all that, and I, I get the research behind that. But as a parent, I need it to be very clear that we need to transition our kids better in this town. I mean, we just do. We don't have any parent-teacher conferences at the middle school. That, to me, blows my mind. So we send our babies out there, they're floating out there, and all I have is an app to tell me what they're doing. I mean, to me, that's just not acceptable. So I, I just beg you that two things. You talk to the kids about what they need, because I will tell you, he left Terriffill very confident. And if I didn't have Mr. Baker there, who I already knew, it would not have gone as well, quite honestly, for Kellen or me. So I just beg that if we do end up going that way, that we really put a lot of thought into that transition, because that is a make or break moment in them. And I, I do like the idea of having eighth grade leadership opportunities, because they went from Terriffill, which we do have a lot. I mean, he had a lot of leadership opportunities to kind of one leadership opportunity. So keep to thought for that in our kids. So if anything, that's just all I could really reiterate. So, thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Langenheld. I'm at 322 Butchy Hill Road. I'm a Latimer parent. And the first thing I want to just thank the board for listening, especially to the concerns of Latimer, because we are busting at the seams already. Our gym is an embarrassment, frankly. So I was really happy to hear that those concerns were taken into account. And I just wanted to express my opinion. I feel very strongly that sixth grade should go to the middle school. Listening to everything about the academics, the expanded opportunities for science, for health class, for extracurriculars, yes, there, there may be a transition issue, but it sounds like the transition from sixth to seventh is having all of those same issues. I'm not sure anything I've heard has made it sound like transitioning between fifth and sixth grade is going to change the issues that kids have then. The last speaker, I think, obviously, getting a good transition plan, which seemed like it was something that was in the board's mind, would be important. So I just wanted to speak in favor of that, because I know we've heard a lot of concerns about moving sixth grade. I wanted you guys to know that there are some of us who would like sixth grade moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm probably going to reiterate on that. So I'm Holly Smith. I'm at 49 Sunset Hill. I'm in the Latimer District. I have a sixth grader, a second grader, and one who will be going into kindergarten next year. So this will absolutely affect all of my kids. I think it's a good consideration to think about these sixth graders. They are, at least, I, I, whatever survey or question you had, at this point in the game, the kids do not even want to go to school anymore. They're ready to move on. They're ready to do something different. There is not many opportunities given to these sixth graders for extracurricular activities or leadership programs, preferably at Latimer, because we are busting at the seams. I am having chills thinking that when my son entered Latimer, that was the year we got rid of the mobiles, because it was so empty. And my kid had the first third classes, like another grade added, class added. So his kindergarten class had 16 kids, and there's a potential for my kindergartner next year to have 26 kids in the class. And it's just appalling to me that, that, you know, that just sounds so ridiculous to me for a fifth grader to have maybe 26 kids in the class. You also have to look at it for kids who are a little bit more excelled, you know, they have to go to an honors math and have to go to the middle school a couple times a week to get an extra math for them, and have to leave their house at 6:40, and then come back. And when their kids, their peers are in the math class, they have to sit outside in the hallway, because there's no room for them to go, because they are, you know, they look like they're being almost punished, because they're excelled in something. And they have to go to a whole nother school to get that help. If my son's really good in reading, we have to talk to a whole nother school to get advice on what books for him to be reading that's appropriate. So I think that it's always going to dip. I would rather have my kid dip a little bit in sixth grade, when it counts a little bit less than in seventh and eighth, going into the high school level, where they might be doing high school work. And I think that's something that we really need to think about. A lot of negativity about moving sixth grade, but there's really a lot of positivity, and I think that's something that really needs to be looked at. I also just, and I'm sorry, this is my first meeting, so I'm a little late to the game. But when you say Latimer is going to be getting done soon, is that like within a year? Or like, how soon are we looking at? Because if you're saying four years for the sixth grade, but we have an immediate concern for Latimer, I'm just trying to figure out how immediate are we looking at the changes in that? And thank you very much for everything.
Thanks. Well, while, while Jeff gets up a slide showing you the timeline on this, I can tell you, certainly, I'm the one that follows the population numbers at Latimer Lane with Mr. Lozetti literally every week. Our, our key cohorts that we need to watch right now are current kindergarten and current first grade are really the two are really the two cohorts that are putting strain, if you will. Um, uh, the good news is that our early census kindergarten numbers are comfortable right now. Doesn't always stay that way, but as we talk here in March, we're we're not experiencing a particularly large entering kindergarten cohort. So I thought I would maybe uh put your mind at ease a little bit there.
So as far as the question relative to how fast a building can be renovated, if uh you follow the grant application process and referendums, uh, this is a, this schedule here has been part of, I think, nearly every presentation we've given to the neighborhood meetings, so it's also online. But um, we're kind of in the midst of discussing the options, right? And then there'll be an option hopefully um this spring. Um, so that first step would be discussed all the way through to next spring um with a referendum in 2021, spring of 2021, potentially. Um, and then it gets submitted to the state in June, and then you wait until December to understand your reimbursement, where you are on the, what's called the priority list. And then you can either start designer or wait until the following spring, until the legislators vote. So you have about 12 to 18 months of kind of figuring out what to do, drawings, putting all the approvals together. And then you have another, you know, 18 months of construction. So timeline for a project like this is anywhere from, you know, about four years to five years, depending on when you want to start. And you can either step on the gas or step off the gas to get there. But that's kind of an average timeframe. Um, and as far as what happens in between that, um, there's been several discussions relative to, obviously, you heard redistricting, but potential for modulars. I know Neil's looked at that. I don't know if you mentioned that when I was pulling up the slide. But um, so there's various different options that have to probably happen if the numbers um come to realization um between now and when you're kind of walking through that door and that new renovated news or new school, so.
So I think it, just to kind of put a little point on it, if we can get through a recommendation that we can bring to the Board of Finance and we all decide to move that forward to referendum, the earliest you would see it on the ballot would be May of 2021, which puts opening doors fall of 2024. So that just kind of, just to kind of let that be there for a minute. Um, and what we've said is, going forward, as the crush comes into Latimer Lane, a lot depends on where we land. If we're going to move the sixth grade, that might bring about different decisions. And we bring in modulars to kind of alleviate some of that stress. Um, we don't want to redistrict the same group of kids more than once. So we really are trying to get a handle on where this plan might go and what resolution we might have so that we can have the least impact to the kids. Um, so so those are the, that's really, we're a little bit stuck until we move to the next step. We're we're gonna let everybody speak first, okay?
Hi, I'm Lisa Truman Trend, uh, 23 Hilda Crest Drive. Um, a Latimer parent. It's part of my Latimer pride tonight. Um, so I just want to thank you for all your work. Um, my husband graduated from Simsberry High School, uh, class of 88. I have a um junior at the high school. I have a freshman at the high school. I have a eighth grader and a third grader. Um, so when we first moved here to Simsberry, uh, we entered Latimer um the year that the modulars went down. She just had that, Mr. Lizetti's first year, um, and uh saw the population dip. Of course, now, we know that it's growing quick. Um, when we moved here, we loved the K through six model. Um, we um came from a school system that was operating like the 50% 50th percentile in the state of Massachusetts. So it was really great. We wanted to move back to Simsberry to be a top um school district, not just in the state, but of course nationally. You guys all know that, so. So we moved here on purpose for all of that. So now, having experienced so much, um, you know, every kind of part of the journey um from Simsberry Schools, um, being a K through six fan, like cheering, um, I'm now like turned into a six-through-eight fan, um, experiencing um the struggles from my three kids who've gone through Henry James and seeing how I really wish for each of them that it had been very different. Um, and some of the things that um Scott, uh, Mr. Baker shared tonight um really addressed some of those things that we've all felt and talked about um in our house, um, about how our kids were struggling at school. So I just wanted to kind of share um how just our personal experience um with um not having the six, uh, six-through-eight model, how we lived through that, even though we were a fan of the K through six, um, and seeing that all of those things were addressed um with the research, which I had gone to the Latimer Neighborhood Meeting and asked for more um research. And um, so I just thank you and appreciate it. And um, so I'm a fan, six-through-eight. Thank you.
Daniel Domena, 24 Hayes Road, lifelong town resident, went to Simsberry from kindergarten all the way up through high school. I've been in town for 36 years. And uh I chose to raise my family in town because of the school system and the opportunities that it presents, and I am a local business owner. Um, one of my biggest concerns is, we've been doing this for 25 years. I mean, we've been renovating elementary schools and the junior high and the high school for the past 25 years. And I know better than anyone, being in the modeling industry, that you have to update things. Things have to happen. They have to come up at times. But are we doing too little too late? I mean, what is, what is the reasoning behind just moving kids around and maybe making a school a little bit better? Why aren't we thinking about what happens 15, 20, 25 years from now? I mean, we're we're definitely poised at a point where we need to react. And we're being very reactive instead of proactive. Why can't we think about the next generation? Our children, when they decide to stay in town. My daughter's going into kindergarten next year, and she is gonna be affected by this 100%. My son's 15 months old. He's gonna see the next generation of schools. Why not make them ready for their kids?
So, uh, so I think um what we're trying to do is give that long-range plan. That's sort of the goal of this, is to have a plan. We've been taking care of the schools to the best of our ability within the financial constraints that are given to us as a board. So we work with, I um, we work as a community. The Board of Selectmen needs capital money. We need capital money. The Board of Finance does its best to manage that the big needs are met. We've renovated the high school. We've renovated Henry James. We've done some smaller renovations at most of the elementary schools, with the exception of Squadron Line never being touched since it was built. We've done a little bit, and we've done our best to keep the buildings up within the confines of what our budget allows. We're at a point now, it's not just about moving kids around, it's about trying to have a long-range plan. So we aren't reactionary. We have a way forward to renovate the buildings or build new. It's a, it's a renovate as new or build new. So it's not a spot renovation in a building. It's a holistic renovation to a building.
Josh Felko, 1 Harlan Road, Terriffel, Connecticut. Um, wanted to start by just truly thanking Ed, uh, Jeff from Tecton, uh, members of Facility Enrollment Task Force. I I think people have said it, thank you for hearing the community since November. I know many of you put in a lot of time, nights, efforts, going out there, reworking PowerPoints, the survey. And I, and I know, again, a lot of time and effort went into it, and we thank you for that and for getting us here with what many of us were concerned with the school closing off the table, allowing us to really now focus on the children. So thank you for all of that. You know, with the past week or so, after hearing at the Board of Ed that, you know, that was off the table, allowed me to really kind of consider the K-five versus K-six. I I think as a parent, you know, we we come in and you just, you want to protect your little ones. I have a third grader and I have a kindergartner. Um, and you just think, oh, I'm not gonna throw them to, you know, the middle school, the lions, Mr. Baker. That was Mr. Baker's line. I said wolves. He corrected me. So uh, but I think we also, as parents, need to sometimes step back from that emotion and and listen to the experts. I'm not an administrator. I'm not a teacher. Uh, when I see 80% of the teachers say, you know, maybe it is better, that that should resonate with all of us. Um, when you you see studies, studies can go any way you want them to. There's research, and I'm sure there's pros and cons. Um, thank you, Mr. Baker, for letting us hear from the students. I think that's helpful. Um, in hearing all that and seeing what the surrounding towns are doing, one thing that kind of hit me tonight too was, we think about the sixth graders, but I'd be really interested as we move forward, if there's time for it, just to hear some of the board and Mr. Baker's ideas for the, you know, growth of the middle school. Because we say six, but then as you were speaking, all of you were speaking, made me think like the seventh graders really could benefit from this too, right? Like, it just gives them a year to just decompress, right? You you're nervous in sixth grade that you're gonna be going into middle school, and then you're nervous because you're the newbie. In the eighth grade, you're nervous that you're going to the high school. So maybe a year to just decompress and enjoy middle school would be beneficial. Um, the eighth grade opportunities, love to hear more about how they can be more leaders. Um, I think it also makes the fifth graders, the new sixth graders, right, at elementary school. And so, I mean, hearing, again, having an open mind now, because again, I think some of us, you know, myself was very focused on the school closing. But now, having an open mind, it does sound like something to consider. I think there's still worry, and change is always scary. And as a town, we're very prideful and we we like our K through six. So I I think it is an open discussion, but I I love that we're there now and we're having that discussion. And and the last thing I kind of just, general statement, and I know I'm addressing the board, but people listening or people here, is wherever we land here, I just ask that everyone really get behind it. Um, we can't just keep kicking the can. 75-year-old schools isn't acceptable for our town, right? We're always up there and you go online and you see Simsberry Top 10, our elementary schools all over. You know, I I don't know how long we can expect that to last if you've got schools that just can't keep up. So I would just say, wherever we land, Board of Selectmen who are here, Board of Finance, um, in in town, when it comes time to vote, that everyone just put in the time and effort now, ask questions. We've seen they'll listen. Um, so then when it does come time, we can get behind this, because we're a prideful town, and we're at that point now where it's time to step up, you know, kind of put our money where our mouth is. It's not gonna be easy. Um, but the survey showed many of us understand taxes are gonna go up. So I just ask everyone that when the time comes, we we get together as a society, as a town, and we support what's right for our students in the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Gaidas. I live on West Cot Road. I'm a Terriffel family. I have three kids. I have a three-year-old, so I'm not worried about kindergarten yet. I also have a kindergartner and a second grader. This is their future. I'm a 1995 Simsberry High School graduate myself, from a Simsberry family. We're here to stay. I just wanted to speak to the pre-K moving into other schools and speak mostly to the vertical alignment that that allows. I'm a pre-K teacher in Bloomfield. We're in a school by ourselves. We don't get to see that vertical alignment. We don't get to team as collectively with other teachers in other grade levels. We're kind of all in our own space, kind of like a junior high school. Um, one of the cons is not having enough special services space, thinking about occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, and special education services that need to be done outside of a classroom, keeping in mind that that can be the least restrictive environment for our students. The same could be said for the junior high school, making sure that that space is available for those sixth graders who really need that space outside of their regular education classrooms. So please keep that in mind as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lori Mathis, 18 Worcester Road. Um, I want to thank you for all the time.
I think you have to step.
You've put into things.
I think you need to step.
And again, I want to say thank you for all the work you've put into this and listened to everyone throughout the town and everyone's concerns with the schools. I'm kind of jumping ahead in the program um to when schools are occupied. My husband's been in the trades for years. Um, one of the things that you're gonna want to think about is once you get these renovations done or a new build, wherever, you need to take care of those buildings. One of the best examples I've seen of that is in Windsor Locks, where their facilities manager is in the trade, wasn't just, and this, I don't mean this to be demeaning to someone that works as a custodian. But if you get people in to take care of your schools that are in the trades, your schools are gonna be taken care, and then you're not gonna have to worry about this in the long run. So just something to think of when, once everything's built or renovated, also have your facility people that you need. They're just as important as the teachers, because they're the ones who are gonna take care of your buildings. Otherwise, you know, how many, whatever many years it'll be, it's not gonna be us, but it'll be somebody else sitting here doing the same thing.
Thank you.
Uh, John Nagy, 71 North River Street, Terriffel, class of uh 1968 here at Terriffel School. I mean, Terriffel School? Oh, Simsberry High School, my fault. Well, um, I've attended a lot of meetings and gotten very well-educated. And um, I'm sympathetic to the parents who are nervous about their sixth graders. Um, I was a social worker, a school social worker for 30 years. And uh, so I had some of those kids who had adjustment problems. And uh, and I uh, I'm sympathetic to the parents in that regard. We have a K-six system that uh works, and works very well. And so one would say, why would we want to mess with that? Why would we want to turn that uh, turn that page? What would be the advantage? A lot of the advantages have been uh talked about this evening. And um, certainly uh from a logistical standpoint, to um provide, uh, create capacity at all the schools by um having a sixth grade at Henry James, uh, it seems to make some sense, uh, notwithstanding the educational advantages that might come with it. So I'm certainly sympathetic to that point of view as well. Uh, I'm also president of the Terriffel Village Association. I've lived in Terriffel since uh 1974. And um, so I know that uh Terriffel has uh been on the way up. And uh, I really appreciate the fact that you have listened to us and that you're preserving Terriffel School. It means a lot to me. As you, as you know, it means to a lot of other people too. So uh, if we were to go to the uh six, seven, eight uh combination, uh, we would lose the sixth grade from Terriffel School, and our enrollment is already low, so this would lower our enrollment further. So that makes me a little nervous, but at the same time, it would create capacity for those schools that might be overcrowded that need a place to come. Terriffel welcomes you. In addition, uh, the thought has been made that um we could have preschool in Terriffel. I think that would be great. I would love to have preschool in Terriffel. Ready, set, go? Hey, ready, set, go is good. We could have ready, set, go. We could have preschool. And we could take um kids who need a home uh that are in overcrowded schools. So I like all those things, but uh, support for that transition is critical. And I know if anybody could do it, Simsberry could do it, because it's one of the best school systems in the state, which is one of the best school systems in the nation. So congratulations to all of you and thank you for all your hard work.
Hi, Linda Thompson, 24 Chestnut Hill Road. Um, I've known most of you for over 10 years. Um, sorry to beat a dead horse, but when I realized I was coming tonight at like 4:30 in the afternoon, I Googled, should sixth grade be in middle school? And these were the top re, top things that came up. Do middle schools make sense? New research finds that keeping students in K-8 schools has benefits. The negative impacts of starting middle school in sixth grade. Sixth graders in middle schools fare worse than peers in L. Sixth graders in middle schools fare worse than peers in elementary schools, study finds. Should sixth grade be in elementary or middle school? An analysis of grade configuration and student behavior that concludes they should not be joined with the middle schoolers. And one thing, one of the ones that I pulled up had a question and answer, kind of what we hear and what we know, and it addressed some of the things that were on your charts. What we hear, sixth graders are developmentally ready for middle school. Answer, studies show that while some sixth graders say or may be more mature, many are not ready for the decrease in supervision and the anxieties associated with new peer groups, new teachers, intensified expectations for both performance and individual responsibility and self-perception compared to older adolescents. Sixth graders can be separated from seventh and eighth graders by adjustments in the school schedule and class locations. Answer, sixth graders in elementary schools benefit from their leadership roles and from their interactions with younger children as helpers and guides. Isolating sixth graders does not allow them opportunities for mentoring and leadership. Research also indicates that it is the transition into a much larger peer cohort that has negative effects. One, a couple of other points I'll make. My sixth grader already gets up early enough. We're asking them now to take a bus that's an hour earlier if we join them with the middle school. There's no recess in middle school and recess is one of her favorite periods of the day. And you say they, they won't be isolated, but they won't be having lunch with seventh and eighth graders, they won't be having gym with seventh and eighth graders, they won't be having health with seventh and eighth graders. And speaking of health, I just reviewed with Amy Muska at the, here at the high school, all the human development and growth or human growth and development from sixth grade up to 12th grade. And I can tell you, sixth graders, or let me put it this way, when girls get their period, it changes a lot. And most girls in sixth grade haven't gotten it, but I can tell you, most of them in seventh and eighth grade have and they're different people. And most boys haven't experienced the things in sixth grade that the boys in seventh and eighth grade have. And I don't think they should be put together for academic reasons, for emotional reasons, for social reasons, where they're not even going to be together. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks.
No one else?
One more.
I don't really have much value to add here, except can we get Jeff a real name tag and make him an honorary citizen? I just want to say thank you guys.
Sorry, I just actually have one follow-up question. If Scott, maybe you could address this. Jessica Paris, 102 North Saddle. Can you provide some specifics, if you've thought this far into the process, on how you'd help these sixth graders transition, in a way that you're not already doing with the seventh graders, or perhaps expand a little bit on how you're doing that? So we can get our heads around how that process would look and, and what extra help, if any, is necessary for those sixth graders?
Sure. So I mean, I can talk to how we, we transition our sixth graders into seventh grade now. We actually have already begun that process. We, I've gone out and visited every elementary school along with Mrs. Belmonte, our assistant principal, and our guidance counselor. So we orient our sixth graders to, for us, reaching out to the, the school first. And we talk to them about the role of the guidance counselor, because that's something new for them, and orient them to the choices they have. And they get excited about choosing a language and choosing their music and that sort of thing. And then we invite them for a day to visit Henry James, that'll be in, in another couple of months. And they come out and they spend time in our eighth grade, or actually, seventh and eighth grade leadership teams, bring them around the building and show them the whole school. And then we've been, and then, and then when we start them, the first day is really not classes, they're learning the building, they're in with their connections teacher, which is a, connections is a small group that they meet during, during block periods during the week. And to answer the recess question, they die to go outside during connections time. So middle schoolers, we do allow them time outside to, to do middle school things, they're not on the swings anymore, but they're playing soccer and they're, and they're hanging out with each other. But we're continuing to think about different ways we can transition. Our guidance department has fantastic ideas and I think we would need to rethink the whole thing if we're bringing fifth graders and transitioning them for their fifth grade year to the sixth grade year, just because they're a unique group of kids and there would, there would be, need to be a lot more thought. But we're actually in the works of thinking about other things we can do. We've got some really good ideas of stuff we can do through the summer. We just have been prevented by doing that for the past two years because of asbestos work going on in the building and that'll happen this summer too. But we are planning some things we can do in the summers to transition as well and get them used to the school.
Okay, so that's all. I just want to give you an idea of next steps. The Board's going to kind of take all this feedback tonight, we're going to look at that. We'll get something out about what we've heard and how we've heard it. We'll use our Facebook page, so if you haven't liked it, Simsbury Board of Education on Facebook, please like that page. That'll give you a lot of our information directly. And again, we'll use the Schools List Serve and the Towns List Serve and our website, the Facilities tab has all the information from every presentation going all the way back to spring of 19? Was that our first presentation, maybe? I think spring of 19. So more information than you probably ever wanted, but it's all there. And then the Board, then we have a Facilities and Enrollment Task Force meeting the end of the month, and then we're going to move through with the Board and figure out our next steps. We have to meet with the Board of Finance and get some ideas about how we want to move a plan forward and do some of that financial modeling so we can have a better sense of cost impacts. And please stay involved, please keep up with all of the information, we'll do our best to keep you informed. I don't know if we'll come back together in this format again, but our Board of Education has public audience at the beginning and end of every meeting, you're always welcome, second and fourth Tuesday of every month. So don't hesitate to email if you have questions and thank you all for coming tonight.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.